Good evening. It is six thirty and I am going to call our meeting to order on Tuesday, July twenty second, two thousand and twenty-five. And with that call to order, I am going to ask Mr. Holla, our city attorney, to lead us in invocation and afterwards, if Councilmember John Power can lead us in our pledges.
Father, we come for you tonight. We serve ourselves to you, your graciousness, your mercy, your compassion. Oh, to be like you and to be able to forgive. What a, what a grand gift. What a wonderful thing. Forgiveness would go so far in the world that we have today, filled with so much war and turmoil and angst, which is an amazing thing. Please help us extend that compassion, that mercy and that grace that you've taught us and that you demonstrated us by giving us your life to be a more complete act of mercy and compassion than that. We ask you to watch over this council, bless them as they make decisions on behalf of the city. I thank you for the opportunity that I've had, the blessing that I've had to work with this council and also with the staff. I say that even Chief, even though he's stabbing us in the back and leaving, he's going on to do things, what he's got to do, but we will miss him and I've enjoyed the time that I've had working with him and he is someone that I valued and that I appreciate very much. And I thank you for the opportunity that I've had to get to know him and work with him. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. God bless Texas.
All right. Well, Chief got an extra prayer tonight, so it's awesome. Yeah. I don't know how you follow that. So rules of decorum are always applying when we're at our meetings. We want to treat one another with respect, whether it be the citizens or the diocese and vice versa, back and forth to y'all. We also, I started dedicating meetings to fallen members, so I will draw the name and tonight we will honor Tom Egan. So this meeting will be for him and I think if we're honoring somebody who's given their life, we should just act accordingly. With that, I am going to go to item number four and it is a proclamation. And since this one's going to be a proclamation to the citizens and staff, I will just ask if my city manager can join me up here.
Yes.
All right. Proclamation. Whereas on July fourth, twenty twenty-five, the city of Kerrville and the surrounding hill country experienced a catastrophic flash flood that profoundly impacted the community and its residents. In the wake of this disaster, the spirit of unity and compassion shone brightly through the actions of many individuals and organizations within Rockwall County. Whereas on July fifth, twenty twenty-five, Mayor Brian McNeil McLennan Chisholm reached out to Mayor Joe Herring Jr. of Kerrville to offer heartfelt support and prayers. Immediately following, Councilmember Donald Goodman communicated with Mayor McNeil seeking ways that McLennan Chisholm could aid our fellow Texans in need. Whereas in response to this emergency, we initiated a collection drive for essential items. Citizens rallied together generously, donating supplies to aid those affected, demonstrating the strength of our community spirit. To further enhance our efforts, we coordinated with the county to issue NICSOL notifications, encouraging citizens of Rockwall County to contribute to this collective relief initiative. Whereas donations poured in, the McLennan Chisholm Fire Department became a hub of activity. The need for broader assistance was recognized. Neighboring agencies, including the Rockwall County Office of Emergency Management, Rockwall County Sheriff's Office, Heat DPS, Royce City Fire Department and Rockwall Fire Department were contacted. Many volunteers showed up to assist in the collection efforts, including two amazing youth organizations from the Rockwall Fire Explorers to the National Charity League Lone Star Chapter. Whereas by July seventh, the impact of the community generosity was overwhelming, resulting in an astonishing outpouring of support that exceeded our initial expectations. What began as a plan for two trailers of relief turned into four trailers in addition of a large Penske truck generously donated for the mission. Therefore, let it be known that none of this would have been possible without the kindness, generosity and unwavering commitment of the citizens of Rockwall County and all the cities, all the cities within. Your willingness to stand together in times of need has made a meaningful difference in the lives of those affected by the flood, working in partnership with the Church of Christ Disaster Relief Team. With immense pride and gratitude, I, Brian McNeil, hereby proclaim our thanks to the citizens of Rockwall County. Your efforts embody the true spirit of Texas, showcasing the resilience and compassion that unite us all in times of need. Bev, if we can have that proclamation framed up and put in the hallway? Okay. Who's playing jokes on me? Okay. Caught me off guard on that one. And I love that everyone's laughing. So somewhere there's something going on around here and I apologize. I can tell I'm red right now. I don't know who's doing it, so that's what gives me... Deputy? I need your assistance. Anyways, if we can have that framed and put up for the citizens, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. All right. If we can get the animal control here. That brings us to citizens' comments and Mr. Colin Huffheinz is up first.
Hello, councils, citizens. It's been a while since I've been in this building and I see some new faces on council. Let me introduce myself. I am the project manager of the Horizon Lakes Development just down the road. It is a legacy job for me, my family and our firm. This is going to be the best, the nicest, the coolest community we've ever done and we really thank you and look forward to future partnership as this job goes under construction and expects to deliver hopefully this time next year. So quick construction items that are being, I guess, ongoing and active in the field. The grading is nearing probably seventy-five percent complete. Wet utilities are expected to start here in the next three weeks and then paving probably hopefully August, but likely September in this world. And yeah, we have three awesome builders lined up. Toll Brothers, famous for their custom homes. We have Pulte Homes, famous for their Dill Web Age Targeted Program and then Castle Rock, famous for their personal interior upgrades and special details on landscaping and other fun additives they do in the outdoor living space. So we have a wonderful builder lineup, the best in the business. It took us a while to get them all signed up and to break ground and tomorrow is our groundbreaking. We are cordially inviting y'all. We have a bunch of swag bags here for everybody. We have a couple flyers, start at ten AM, gonna run until noon. We have shaded tent and trees all trimmed up so that we plenty of cool, I guess, shade for everybody. Couple of words from other elected officials, you're all welcome to come speak. If you do want to come speak, we recommend getting there a little early, maybe not like marine time, but how about, you know, nine forty-five on the dot? Or for Brian, that might be nine fifteen. But yeah, it's gonna be a great little time. We'll have some snacks and such. And in our swag bag, we have a glass water bottle because the job is famous for solving the water problem for the development and maybe the future of this town. We drilled the largest well in the county and it could not have been more blessed or providential that the water quality is amazing from the tap. I drank it for myself as they were testing it and I wish, I tried my absolute hardest and darndest to get the well up and running to fill these water bottles for everybody. But Encore being the power provider takes their sweet time on delivering power to your infrastructure. So you're gonna get a water bottle and without the water yet and hopefully we'll be able to fill it this time next year. Anyway, y'all have my number. If you don't, I'll pass a card around here shortly. Thank you very much and look forward to seeing everyone tomorrow, round ten or nine fifteen. Thank you.
Thanks, Colin. You want to pass those out or? Yeah, go ahead and pass them out. That's fine. Give you a second. Chief, you don't get one because you're retiring. Chief's retiring. You can give his to someone else.
So maybe I should just make that announcement now since y'all have kind of spilled the beans.
Go ahead, Bev. Bev is gonna make an announcement.
So one of my announcements for the end of the meeting was to let everyone know that Chief Simmons is retiring the end of this month and moving on to another opportunity. We will miss him more than he will ever know, but it'll be okay. We'll be fine.
And our last citizen's comment will be from Mr. Mark Kipit. He gets to follow all of that, fun prayer, gifts and backstabbing chiefs.
Mark Kipit, thirty-one fireside. Hey, Chief, I got your back, buddy. You're, you will be missed and, you know, keep an eye on the attorney over there. And they had a suggestion from the audience I just want to bring forward for the mayor. Hats with the word citizen on them. Upside down. Go with the whole theme. All right. So again, congratulations, Chief. That's well done. You did a great job. And I can say that as one of the people who've been around here since day one for you. So, thank you. My comments really directed to the council tonight. Appreciate all the work done on the budget. I went through the budget book last dated July third. I think that's the still current one you're working from. Here's a, budgets, it's budgets, the transitory budget, right? It's gonna change. I understand that. Has some work to be done. But it also offers though an opportunity for transition to the future because just, you know, some casual observations. One, in the unacceptable category, the citizens are carrying ninety percent, citizens of the city carry ninety percent of the cost of the fire department, our most essential core service. But you service an area that's twice the size of the city. Got to figure out a way to fix that. And that also of course represents fifty percent of the budget. So it doesn't give a lot of, obviously not a lot of room there. I was surprised there's no apparent transition for LE, for the sheriff's department. Right? We need to start getting serious for asking our firefighters to do more with less. We need to start stepping up and dealing with our county sheriff appropriately and county being fair, fair to all involved. And then the last thing is really in what I consider to be a significant mismatch, where that comes from. In the, it's a non-sustainable situation. So forty percent of the revenue that you're working with come from development. Forty percent of the budget generates from development. Okay? But what's not clear in the budget is any effort to update the things necessary to better guide development. Plan review, some sort of strategic vision for the city. And then finally, the ordinance review because our ordinances are grossly out of date. I think as a couple of us have spoken and has recently been done in action with Pan City. So we're mismatched in our budget right now. Need, need development to fund the city, but not having really good guidelines to develop the way we need the city to develop, the way we want to develop tonight. Thank the Huffheinz for all the effort they did. Good partners, but that's, we're here now, five years, give or take, has been in development. And, you know, it's still, still gonna take a couple more years really to get ramped up. So that's just some of my observations overall. I understand the hard difficulty we have working the budget, but I would recommend embracing the opportunity to have this as a budget that allows for transition and policy so that you can set the stage for future years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. As always, if anyone else has anything? Nope. I will close citizens' comments. That's gonna bring us to our public hearing. And it is six forty-five and I will open our public hearing to receive input regarding the proposed annual budget. For the proposed annual budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year starting in October one, twenty twenty-five and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Public hearing is now open. And if nobody is going to speak on the public hearing, then I will close it at six forty-six. Brings us to our consent agenda and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as written unless anyone sees something to pull off. If not, I will take a motion to approve consent agenda in a whole, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All right. So unanimous on consent, moving right along. Angela, item eight point one, please.
Discuss and consider.
I would say you post his position, but he's already handled that for me. Angela, item eight point one. And Deputy, if you can escort the fire chief out.
Discuss and consider direction to the staff on delinquent bills with Infomarc.
Since this is just, well, we don't need to do a motion on this. It's discuss and consider a direction, right? So Bev, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have discussed in the past that we know we have a problem with past due bills with Infomarc and CWD. Infomarc also bills Sonoma Verde sewer along with the trash. So the last report we had from them was that we had a total in arrears of ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars. I asked them to do a little breakout for me and how many of those were sewer and trash? There were forty accounts that totaled seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and two cents. All of these accounts are RCH water customers. So I had a meeting with Robin Mail with RCH because we have in place a disconnect agreement with RCH for past due sewer bills. So Robin and I sat down and we looked at the accounts that were a hundred and twenty days late and that was the forty, the total, the almost seventy-five thousand dollars. So Robin and I worked out to where we would do certified letters to those accounts and say if it wasn't paid within X number of days, their water would be shut off. say if it wasn't paid within X number of days, their water would be shut off. Robin was a little concerned with there being 40, that it could be a little bit of a massive overload for him. So he wanted to work on a pilot of 10 at a time. So the top 10 would get their certified letter. If they come in and pay their water bill, or come in and pay their sewer and trash bill, within the timeframe that we give them, their water is safe. If it's not, they will also be charged a $50 disconnect fee and a $50 reconnect fee once the bill is paid. Jeff and I spoke with InfraMark about the best way to do this. They felt this was it. And in their history, when the letter goes out, the bill is paid because they don't want their water to be shut off. So the direction that I need from y'all is to move forward with this plan, 10 accounts at a time. And we have a residential fire they're headed to.
Real quick, so with that, I like the plan. I like that they'll step it. I would like to see us at least get the plan out maybe on our website. Maybe ask, get with Mr. Holland, make sure there's nothing bad that we can do. Maybe do one of our text Mike of alerts. Hopefully they're signed up and they, you know, directs them to the website for the plan. Because I think if they see the plan, people need to understand that the city is taking it serious and that this, this money needs to be paid because we are carrying it on our books. And I think if the people can get up here, my hope is that they get their bill paid so they don't have to worry about going through disconnects and reconnects.
It's a little more than carrying on our books, we're actually funding it. We have actually paid InfraMark and CWD for these bills. Correct Jeff?
Okay.
And a payment plan would also be an option to prevent their water from being turned off. So if they got on a payment plan, because some of them are rather large, so they would be able to get on a reasonable payment plan to start paying it back without getting their water shut off. So the idea is for them to show an effort to get caught up.
I'll start with Councilmember Towery, we'll go down the line real quick. But me personally, I won't add any more to it. I think it's a good plan. I mean, if you've already gone this much due diligence, I'm not going to challenge it midstream. Councilmember Towery?
Yeah, so it sounds good. So is it, once they pay, obviously they reset, if there's issues in the future, is it the 120 day, is that the mark when we send out letters again? Or is it 90 day? Or where's our mark where we?
If we can get these 40 accounts that are 120 days late, then we can start into the ones that are way less. And we can also address the ones that are just trash with a different method because we can't shut their water off for just the trash bill. And at the moment, there are only 26 accounts that are trash only for 16,600.
Okay, but is it, I guess what I'm asking is where's our, where's our mark where we're like, for just future when this case happens again, the people, is it the 90 day mark?
You guys would need to tell us that. Once we get this cleaned up and hopefully get these people in a better paying cycle, we may not have to do this again with, with the water shut off threat, so to speak. But you guys could say it's at 120 days and we just automatically do it. That's the direction we're looking for.
Yeah, I'd like something set in stone. I think, I think 120 days is plenty of time to reach out and take care of something. I would like to see something set and we're going forward.
Okay.
Mayor Proton?
I just want to make sure that when we send the certified letters, that's very clear that this is at the city's direction, that we're asking RCH to cut off, that the water would be cut off, that at our direction. Because I don't want them to get into a deal where we're, where they're trying to defend why we're cutting it off for somebody else.
Robin and I did also discuss that we would compare notes and if any of these same people were there, repeat offenders, it might be a joint letter. But we would face that. Technically, the certified letter's going to come from InfraMark, not from us. But we can put in there that it is at the city's direction they are doing this. Because they're the billing agent. We are not yet. Once the ERP is in place, we will be the billing agent.
Yeah, because I know when we were first moving to the InfraMark billing and then there was a question, is this a water bill or is this a trash bill? Who's this coming from and all that? So we just, just for everybody's peace of mind, I just want to be perfectly clear when it's out.
Councilmember Dean?
You probably said it, Bev. How long do we give them? Once they receive the certified mail, how long do they have to?
Typically it's a 10 days. Because it gives them plenty of time to get, because if they wanted to come up here and pay their bill, they can leave the check here, they can go to Forney to pay InfraMark, they can go online and pay it. There's a lot of different ways. So typically it's a 10 day turnaround.
And 10 days, and they may even set up a payment?
A payment plan.
During that time? Okay. And lastly, I agree with Councilman Towery that we need to kind of standardize on this going forward so that we don't treat anybody differently, that if it's over 100 days, 120, we do the same thing.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Goodwin?
So just, I think the 10 days is a little short. I'd like to see 20, 30, just my opinion. Who's sending the letter? Us or RCH?
InfraMark. InfraMark's our billing agent.
They're sending the certified. They just have privacy concerns with turning over data just to another organization.
We, technically, we cannot get the data because we are not the billing agent, so we cannot know who owes what.
Okay.
InfraMark has that information.
Okay. And if they don't set up a payment plan, then it will go to RCH. Yeah, all I really have is I think 10 days is a little short, especially going out in summer, people drowning.
Councilmember Powers?
Last to speak, least to say. I like everything that I hear, coming in total alignment with everybody here. The only thing that we can do with the folks that are trash customers only, obviously a certified letter to them from us or InfraMark would be nice to put the fire under them, let them know we're serious about this. The only power we really have is to, since we can't shut off their water, would be if they're just not going to comply, we'd have to put a lien on their house. And hopefully it would not come to that. Hopefully reason would prevail. But is there a way for us to do this simultaneously? Have RCH working on these 40 and then, and then get certified letters out to these 26?
Sure.
Would anybody object to that? Working on both at the same time? And would you need additional help with that or additional time to put all that together?
It's InfraMark putting it together, not me. So we will need to discuss this with them. Mr. Holland, I would have the question on a past due trash bill, can we put a lien on their house?
Not unless we've got an ordinance that says, you can't, you can't put a lien on the property unless the ordinance comes out and says, hey look, we're having problems with, there's a whole lot of things that we need to notice. Hey, we're out of rock, we're not paying the bills. We want to do certain things to protect the citizens from people aren't paying their bills. And one of the things is we want to be able to put a lien on unpaid sewer. So the best, or excuse me, trash, the best way to do that, because you can do that for water, I guess I'd have to look up specifically if you can do that for trash, because I know you can do that for water. The best route would be working through the water provider, RCH, and we're talking to them about cutting off the water for unpaid trash and see if they'd be willing to do that. Because they do already do that for sewers. So I don't know if we've talked about that.
I don't think you can.
And it's more than RCH water. It's a second water supplier, it would be high point also. If there's any on the other side of town.
Okay.
So we'd have to look at all the water providers.
I have to look, I need to go check and see if we can do that for trash. Regardless, you wouldn't be able to do that without ordinance. So if you want to have an ordinance that looks like that, that you want to put a lien on somebody's property for the unpaid trash, direct staff to do that and we'll prepare the ordinance for the council review at the next meeting.
With the trash service, are we, are we just not able to simply just terminate service after so many days until it's paid? Or is this something that?
We have an ordinance that says you have to use the trash service. So we'd be breaking our own ordinance if we took their cans away.
Okay. Well, I think, I mean, let's go with that direction. And I understand where Councilmember Goodwin's coming from with the more time, but at the same time, if they're already 120 days, they've had enough time. I think 10 days at this point, we've been more than, more than lenient enough. And my argument is just if we push it down further, then we push it down further and it becomes accepted behavior. And I just think it's time to, you know, 120 days late already, 10 days is plenty.
And to build off of something that Councilmember Towery was talking about, so you do ask someone, what's someone going to do if you say cut off service? They'll say, well, okay, fine, screw that, I'm going to go get my own trash provider because I can do it cheaper, get it cheaper, I can do it myself. So that's what you're going to have. So it, to remedy the problem, you are more than likely going to have to be more proactive in that regard. Because people will typically, generally, normally, people will view, hey, we're going to cut off your trash service as permission to go out and get their own.
And our contract with CWD is exclusive, is exclusive for trash service within the city, so they're not allowed to go get service anywhere else. But it would be a fight that we may end up having to fight because people may try to do it. And then that's a whole other battle.
And code enforcement would spend their time chasing down the rebel trash truck to try to get them out of the city.
Does anyone have anything else before we go to the next item?
Let me make sure I understand. You're okay with the plan to go with all the accounts over 120 days late, 10 at a time, or 10 days to get their bill, certified letters, 10 days to get their bill paid. On the 11th day, if it's not paid, we send the address to RCH for disconnection. And then once the past due, the disconnect and reconnect is paid, be paid, water can be turned back on. Everybody's okay with that?
I'm good with that. Last chance, does anybody have any more questions?
Just a comment. I think this is one of the hazards when we start taking on some of the responsibilities for billing for a company. And it's something to think about when the next CWD trash contract comes up for renewal.
Amen. Mayor, Mayor Proton?
Alright, you have direction and Angela, item 8.2 please.
Discuss and consider approval to appoint an alternate member to the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright. Bev, this is, coming back to you.
You have in front of you the application from Jerry Netherland, did I say that correct? For one of the alternate positions for P&amp;Z. So he will be appointed to a two-year term expiring in 2027, which still leaves one alternate point, one alternate seat open on P&amp;Z.
Okay. Yeah, so it's just, it's a P&amp;Z alternate position and all we're doing is voting to approve a P&amp;Z alternate position. So we've had the motion and the second. I can tell you, I do know Jerry Netherland. He is a retired Chief One Officer III in the US Army. And he's sat on other boards, he works for Boeing. What he does for Boeing is, he is the, I believe, the overseas contract person, so his hours are definitely weird because he sometimes has to operate on Middle East time with meetings and stuff. But good man, man of integrity, man that will come in and do what's asked of him and he'll stay on top of things. So with the motion and the second, I would just say all those in favor say aye. I'm an aye.
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 And show that unanimous. And Mr. Kipit, you have another alternate. Okay. Angela, item 8.3. Actually, go to 8.5 first. 8.5.
Update on council place two.
Bev, this is just an update, so I'll let you tell us.
Yes, it is. Mayor and council, we have had three citizens step forward to fill council place two. They are Jeff Curran, Dennis London, and James Burnell. In front of you, in one of the envelopes, you have a brief bio on each candidate and a little paragraph about why they would like to serve on council. At our special meeting next Tuesday on the 29th, this will be on the agenda for you to select one of these gentlemen and have them sworn in to finish out the place two term to May of 2026.
Alright, so there's your direction council for how that's going to work. Y'all have any questions for Bev on that? So next up is item 8.3 and then it'll be 8.4. Before I have Angela read 8.3, since these are going to be updates by me to you, the council, as well as the citizens, and as she's reading 8.3, I'm going to make my way to the podium. So we will do 8.3 first and then I'll do 8.4 from the podium as well.
Mayor's update. Mayor McNeil will give legislative updates from the June conference, what we know now and what was accomplished with involvement from the mayor commissioners, county judge, and mayor's group.
Alright. Good evening council and citizens. Chris Patton, a British politician, once said, "The ability to articulate what you are doing, to be clear about it and to stick to it, I think is the essence of political leadership." The 89th Texas Legislative Session, which concluded on June 2nd, included significant discussions on zoning and local control issues, particularly concerning for ADUs and broader zoning reforms. And I wanted to give you a detailed overview of what I've been working on, as well as the people to understand what I've been doing. ADUs for accessory dwelling units was a Senate Bill 673, and this bill aimed to establish comprehensive regulations for ADUs in our municipalities and counties by limiting local governments' ability to restrict them. However, it did not pass as it was listed dead. Similarly to SB 673 was House Bill 878, and this bill aimed to prevent cities from prohibiting ADUs on single-family home lots and limit local control over ADU-sized placements. The specifics on that one were not really all that great, but I can tell you this, my comments to Senator Hughes on this action, and Dennis London was next to me when I said this, and I literally looked at him and said, "It would destroy the county of Rockwall if this were to pass." I said, "Furthermore, we should all be paying attention to what Austin is wanting to do with local control and what is good for Houston is not good for McLennan-Chisholm." Some other things that went on were zoning and local control, and this is where I became really concerned with what's going on. Senate Bill 15, this bill proposed limit municipality, municipal zoning powers in large Texas cities to promote higher density, more affordable housing. It restricted local ordinances on lot size, setbacks, and density limits, but preserved private deed restrictions and homeowners association rules. The bill specifically targeted municipalities with populations over 150,000 and counties over 300,000 in residency. That was not the case at first. At first, it was any size. And I can tell you, the mayor's group, the county commissioners, the county judge, we're all there. Lauren Lick, the county commissioners here tonight, he was down, everyone was down there doing their part to get in front to protect Rockwall County. Because it's just, what is, again, it fell back on what is good for some cities are not good for all. And it can't be a one-size-fits-all. And I went on to say, "This is the bill that the county and the mayor's truly stayed on and feel we were able to make a difference in having brackets placed that would protect Rockwall County." And here's the thing, with all of these, it is paramount that we remain focused on the signal and not the noise. There should be someone in here smiling, he'll know who it is. Meaning, we need to make sure we are a voice in Austin or eventually the state will take away the local control of the cities. This is why I say we have to stay on the forefront, on the battlefield, in Austin, doing our part. I know some people like to think that if we just sit up here, we're going to be okay. That's not the case anymore. If McLennan-Chisholm is 70% undeveloped, they're knocking on our door and we want to be able to have that local control to at least have some say in what's going on. The argument I had with Senator Middleton and others were, when they would talk about housing, because that was the thing that came up. Unlike what the Huffines Communities Group is building, they're building homes that we want. We want our, to maintain our value. And then when you have some that come in to make affordable housing, it becomes very dangerous. And the argument that I kept hearing back to me was, well, we have, you know, DC is saying we need to have affordable housing. Well, that would be great if- know, DC is saying we need to have affordable housing. Well, that would be great if we were 49th in the nation, but we're number three in the nation, number three in Texas for affordable housing. So I don't, I looked at him, I said, "I don't know how you can make that argument if we're number three." But he seemed to not agree. There are gonna be future sessions, sessions, and some of these bills that were unsuccessful, I can assure you, they're gonna be back. And they might even come back harder and tougher. So where some may think we can just wait until the next session, I can tell you, my talks with the commissioner, my talks with some members of my advisory board, some of the other council members and mayors, we're already a day late if we're not down there talking right now. I mean, it's, it's that important that we stay on this. There's a few other things I'd like to point out real quick, that talk about permitting and, and stuff like that. But at the end of the day, as I opened up, I gave a quote, "The ability to articulate what we are doing is my continued efforts to maintain transparency, and that included why we were making a presence in Austin and even in DC. I have kept my word, and I have fought my best in my stance in what I hear the people are saying, that are reporting to them in our city. This is what leadership is, listening to the people." I read the other day on a post where a former council member asked, "What does a rural mayor need to be going to Austin and DC for?" So I figured I'd answer it this way. If you can go on your front porch and use the restroom, and nobody calls the sheriff's office on you, then you're a rural. If you cannot do that, then you simply are not rural. If we don't fight the fight now, and we are not proactive, then we will already be behind when the time comes, and we will obviously be at the point where we become reactive. Thank you for your time, council and people. And that should bring up item 8.4. Go ahead.
I, I just want to comment a few things that the mayor said, and I appreciate the levity, but at a time of excluding and excising the levity, this is a very serious thing that we have going on. I have, I've gotten emails, I've sent to people four years ago, they think I'm crazy and insane, and that's fine, they can. But look at how the state has systematically dismantled cities. Been saving, saving that, saying that for a number of years. I joke with some of the developers' attorneys that I regularly, "Hey, what are y'all gonna do when all of your people have paid so much to the state legislature that we don't have cities anymore? We don't have city attorneys?" I, I think everybody has heard that by 2031, we're not gonna have any more property taxes. That also includes schools. How is police gonna be funded? I mean, you know, how is fire gonna be funded? Are you guys gonna work for free? I'm just, y'all are involuntary firefighters. Yeah. Oh, that's right. Yeah. All he's, all the chief's gonna be doing is buying more knives to stab other people in the back. That's it. So you got that. How are you gonna pay for, how are you gonna pay for sewer? And y'all are gonna love this one. How are you gonna pay for water? How are all of the infrastructure? We're talking about capital improvement plan. We've never really had one of those, but the mayor, kudos to him talking about it. We haven't really had one of those. But all of these things are gonna be affected by what's going on. They systematically, since 2018, and they change things on annexation. And it is downhill, downhill, downhill. Then we had House Bill 2128 that said, "Hey, you know, basically what we're gonna do is, we're gonna make all cities general law cities. We're gonna strip away all the powers of homerood cities and make them dependent on us, the state, because we want to be the bosses." Well, you had that bastion of conservatism, the Austin District Court down there, who said, "Wait a second, wait a second. You can't do that. Because homerood charterers get their authority from the Texas Constitution, and as powerful as you are, state legislature, you don't trump the Texas Constitution." But that's how bold the legislature is right now. They think they can rewrite the Texas Constitution without going to the voters. Now, that House Bill 2128, it's fine if they send that to the voters, and the voters say, "We want to change this, and we want to take all the power away from homerood cities and make them dependent." Well, the state, just like any good evil entity that you see in any superhero show, they always have a backup plan. So what are they gonna do now? We're now, I guarantee you, now what they're gonna do is, they're gonna privatize everything. Everything is now gonna be privatized for 2031, because we're not gonna have cops, we're not gonna have firefighters, you know, we, we like Scuba Steve, our deputy that comes here, he's gonna be gone. Everybody's gonna be gone now. Why? It's gonna be privatized. The state is gonna be paying for it. They'll contract with someone, and they will pay and have them cover things. But I'll tell you this, I got some smart, and y'all know this, that's not a secret, I got some cities smaller than us that I represent. Most of them are. Little Hamlet, Texas, out there in West Texas, 2,200 people. Do you think the state, do you think by 2032, the state has any plan at all for them to have any kind of protection? I'm being serious. Do you really think there's a plan? They're gonna say, "Well, yes, we do." What legislature? Let me see it. And I want to compliment the mayor, and I'm being serious, I want to compliment the mayor. There comes a time when you're pushed around and pushed around to be none. You look at scripture, anywhere in scripture, like Jesus, Jesus kicked a little butt. When he saw those people in there, the changer, the money changers, he got turned to table. Let me say, go look in any history book. Those were not small tables. Those were not made of little wood. Those shekels, droghmas, and everything, they weighed a lot. Jesus worked out. I don't care what anybody said. Look at scripture, Matthew, he flipped that thing over. The mayor went down there with a bunch of people, wussyfooting around, saying, "Oh, mayor, you gotta say it nice." No, no, no. The time for saying it nice has passed. The mayor walked up and verbally, verbally, that's key word, verbally started popping people in the mouth, going, "Wait, wait, wait, wait. No, no, no. This is what's gonna happen." So make no, and I'm saying that for me, too. Without police, without fire, without sewer, without any kind of infrastructure, the state is negotiating with the privatized people to come in on behalf of the city. What room are they gonna have for city attorneys? They're not, they're not. Hey, will you look over the, look this, look over this interlocal? Oh, you mean the one that they had the state, and the state says you either sign it the way we want to, or you don't get it at all? Yeah, okay, I can spend two and a half seconds looking at that for you. I mean, this is gonna really, really hit cities hard. You're not gonna have the Andy Masters of the world charging keys $2.5 million a year to do litigation. Those days are gonna be gone. So guys like him are sweating way more. I mean, I think everybody knows that I charge a fair rate. So individuals like me that do that, we're gonna maybe be hit less hard. But we're gonna have clients who are devastated by all this. I mean, this is a huge, huge, huge thing. And if you want me to go down to Austin, I'm happy to go tell them.
Well, I was gonna open it up for questions. But I didn't realize Conrad had came back and spoke again. Had a little long-winded on us.
Yeah, one difference, because I have to protect myself now. Nobody is asleep.
Yes. Nobody, nobody is asleep.
So, mayor, thank you.
No, I appreciate it. And, and, and I, and I will say, I, I was not kind in a lot of my, I was kind in my words, I was just not as kind in my delivery, because it is very serious. And if we're not down there taking it serious, and we're not down there saying what needs to be said, then it's, then we're gonna be ignored. And, and I just, as I would sit there in some of these meetings, and I would watch them unfold, literally no one even taking notes sometime, I just, I guess the marine in me did come out a little few times. And since Bev was not there to tell me what I can say and not say, it's her fault. And I will say purposely, I did not show her my speech tonight, because I know she would have taken out my rural example.
I know that, because I've got the nail marks in my thigh from when she grabbed me in the paper. So you're right, mayor.
Does anyone have anything to add before we go to the next item?
I did say to the city attorney when you got started, I did not approve this speech. So I'm just going on record.
He didn't know he wasn't gonna make it. Until you did an excellent job and led the way like you do, mayor, because you're amazing that way. Until that happened, he didn't know he was gonna say anything, so.
We'll go to the next item. Angela.
8.4. Mayor's update and presentation of the sewer line break response and cleanup process.
Okay, I'll give Angela a moment to get this up. So I did a presentation this morning at the commissioner's court, and since I do not like to be redundant, as people know, I do not like to talk in circles, this speech is changed up from this morning, and then I'll walk you through what each slide is about. So, council and citizens, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I want to provide with you an update on the recent sewer line break that occurred on June 17th, 2025, and outline our response efforts. First, I want to commend our city staff and partners for their swift action in addressing this issue. Upon notification of the break, everyone on staff was making calls and doing what they could, including our chiefs. This was all to ensure a coordinated response with our, with, with the response. Within our first hour, we collaborated with Infomark to halt the flow, and Double R was on site to begin the necessary repairs. Communication with our community has always been a priority for me, and it was in this process as well. We quickly informed residents that the water supply was unaffected. This was in part by reaching out to both High Point and RCH to make sure water was safe to drink. Much of the communication was the city utilizing our website, social media, and calling on the county for the NICSAL alerts. Transparency is key, and we all agreed that we wanted to ensure the safety of our citizens during this situation, and that was keeping them informed. Staff kept up with the updates on the situation and made official press release updates at each phase, and I thank Jeff for getting those done for me. Within the first four hours, we successfully repaired the line, preventing any loss of flow. Our cleanup partner, EnviroServe, arrived swiftly and with the assistance of the sheriff's office, utilized the drone technology to assess the situation fully. And I am proud to report that our team's pumped, or EnviroServe's team pumped approximately 40,000 gallons of sewage, ensuring a thorough response. Following the initial response, we implemented a phased remediation plan, and on June 18th, BioRemedy conducted assessments to meet TCEQ requirements, and we received positive feedback on our action plan. In the subsequent weeks, we adjusted our treatment zones based on soil samples, released over 8,000 gallons of micro back into the stream with a 40,000 gallon flush, and took further measures to eliminate bacteria and restore the environment. By focusing on targeted treatments rather than an excavation, we also were able to manage our costs effectively and also preserved our surrounding vegetation. As we move forward, I want to assure you that we remain committed to maintaining the trust and safety of our community. I want to thank the council for your contribute, for your continued support and collaboration, and thank you to the citizens that reached out and the Rogers family for allowing us access to the property so that we could treat the area. And myself and the fire chief will be happy to answer any questions that you may have after I finish the slide presentation. So on the first slide, you'll basically see that Microback International is who we brought in to do our cleanup. This actually, as I found out this morning at Commissioner's Court, came from the fire chief's many years of doing hazmat, and so he was able to have some contacts, and he, he brought this company in. And if you'll go to the next slide, on that one, you're gonna see at the very top, you'll see where it says project background, and it says 60,000 gallons of sewage spill into the creek. And then you heard in my opening statement, I said 40,000 gallons. It's because a lot of it, it absorbs into the soil, which is why, as I go through the slides, you'll see where the scale and the scope, how we treated things with flushing and with spot treatments, was able to make it an effective cleanup. Next slide. So as I was saying, one of the, one of the treatments that we did, or the treatment that we chose, was the bacteria spray and flush. So the very next day, they were already out taking samples and getting stuff set up for spot treatments. And this was to make sure that we could at least get ahead of what's going on. And also, we wanted to have a ground zero, if you will, of what the bacteria was, so we knew what we were fighting. And it was pretty much everything from Ecoli to just everything. I was told I'm not allowed to say some of the words by my city manager. By going this route, and it was expensive, it was a price tag of over a million dollars to, to do this. However, had we done the excavation route, and talked with the chief, we'd probably have been four, five, or even six million. Because when you go in and you start tearing out the vegetation, well, those homeowners are gonna want some of that stuff back. And so they're gonna, it just becomes a very, very costly thing to do. You can actually skip site investigation and go to the next site. So this is a satellite image on the next slide, and you'll see the start of the blue line down there on 550. That is where the leak, where the pipe break was, was at. Once this was spotted by Mark Woodruff, our code enforcement, he immediately came back, got with the chiefs, who immediately came over to the city hall, got with the city manager and myself. And that's pretty much when I think everybody was on the phone, including the secretary, Jeff, I mean, everybody was trying to figure out something to, you know, figure this out. One of the questions asked to me at Commissioner's Court today was, "How did you get people to act so fast?" When I got back, Bev said, "Well, when they heard my voice on the other end of the line, I think they knew how serious it was." But it also came back down to exactly what I said. We live in a county that is just amazing that they, they don't say no. They, they want to help. People want to help. They showed it with the Kerrville, they showed it with this spill. I was also reminded today about the only person who tells me no is my city manager from time to time. So as you follow the blue line, you see it goes through the Rogers property, but all the way down through the creek there. And you can go to the next one. You can actually skip the next one, that one, because that one's not gonna show much. This one is gonna show, the next one's gonna show your contamination, how it made it, you know, this is why they did this, because they wanted to see if it made it to Brushy Creek, what the current flow of the, the water was, how wide, they wanted to get all their measurements. So this is what they use as their baseline to test the soil samples throughout. And they did this every time they were here. And the last soil samples they took, we're still waiting on a report back from TCEQ, but as soon as we have that, we will make another update to the citizens, so they know everything is, is good to go and treated. The next slide is gonna show the roadside treatment part of it. In that area, they sprayed over 1,500 gallons of the hand spray application to treat areas that they were able to see that were impacted. On the next slide, you'll see the creek bank treatment, and you'll see over here where they sprayed about 4,500 gallons of the, the spray and spot treatments, just to show you how vast. And that spot treatment, they are walking with packs and spraying areas that they saw. So that's a lot of gallons to spray on foot. And the last slide actually shows the, the final part of this whole thing. So after all the spot treatments, when they did the flush, they had built temporary dams in phase two in two different spots. And when they released the dam and they brought in the water, and all the bacteria that they used to flood, it was a 40,000 gallon flush, and that goes all the way to Brushy Creek. My best way to describe it is, if you ever saw the movie Gremlins, when they got wet, they multiplied. And that's kind of what the bacteria does. As it eats more bacteria, it multiplies until it eats it all. And once it eats it all, it's just gone. So it was a good plan. We got a TCEQ of amazing. They couldn't even believe we were on top of it that much. So, council, if you have any questions, myself or the fire chief will be happy to answer them. If not, that concludes that part of the presentation.
Is there, so what's, is there any next step after this whole testing that they did?
Chief, you want to take that?
Once we get the samples back and TCEQ approves of that, we are, at that point, we're back to what we call clean. We won't have to do any more treatments. So as long as we get hot samples, as we call it, then we have to treat it. But with the process that they had, the mayor talked about there at the end, the flush and all that, we figured that, they figured they were at a good spot with the treatments that we'd done, that this is probably gonna clear it out to where we don't have any more testing needs to be done.
Anything else? All right. Thank you for your time.
Bev said, thanks, Conrad.
Well, that's funny, because next up is Bev's contract. So Angela, if you'll read item 8.6.
Discuss and consider approval of the interim city manager contract extension.
Okay, on this one, folks, you're welcome to stick around. We're gonna end up going into executive session for this. That is pretty much the last item on our agenda tonight. So we're just gonna go back there just to discuss her, our interim city manager's contract. And we're gonna come back and give a direction on it. So you're welcome to stick around for that direction. If not, you, I don't know how long you would sit out here to wait for that. So with that, city council, for the city of McLennan-Chisholm, Texas, reserves the right to convene into executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed as authorized by Texas Criminal Code, Chapter 551. Prior to going into executive session, it's 7:28. I'm gonna give us a five-minute recess. So if everyone can be in executive session at 7:35.
It is 7:52 and we are back from executive session and folks, we might get out of here in under an hour and a half. Never been more excited in my life to be a mayor. All right, with that said, there was no action taken in executive session. However, I will entertain a motion to approve the extension for the contract agreement for the city manager.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Need a minute. It's an aye. All right, with that, that brings us to our last bit, which is going to be reports and announcements. And I will start with Mr. Jeff.
For those of you that just came back from TML, I will prepare your travel forms and get those to you to sign and work on getting your mileage reimbursement for you.
Chief squared. The chiefs have nothing. Councilmember Towery? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I went to the emergency services meeting and the new board was reelected, which was basically the old board was reelected to be the new board. There is an opening for the Rockwall County Emergency Management side of things, the specialist position, because Matt left to be a city manager in Merkel. And so that moved up some people, so they have an opening there if anybody's interested. There's also going to be ICS training, which is incident command training in September. For intermediate and advanced levels, 300, ICS 300 and 400, which I had years ago. And then this past weekend, Saturday, I went to the Children's Advocacy Center. They had an open house. They're gearing up for, they want to add to their building, they have the land. They do a lot and for as much, it's a blessing that we have that here in Rockwall, which is the Children's Advocacy Center. The sad thing is that they're overgrowing their place now because the caseload is such, they need a bigger place and they have to have room to be able to service the community and to assist the law enforcement partners and the Child Protective Service partners. So it was a very interesting walk through and got to see a lot of the local politicians there and anyway, it was a great tour.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Dean? Councilmember Goodwin, do you have anything?
I did have my first breakfast, breakfast tacos with council last week and that went pretty well, had a couple of people show up. Good conversations, I just want to let everyone know I'm going to be doing it August 13th, Wednesday morning, 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. at Rosa's. So I don't know what we're going to be chatting about, I'm going to try to have a theme for each one. So just want to put that out there, get that date out there, August 13th, 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. at Rosa's.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Powers?
Yes, sir. Last meeting, you two individuals were not here when you were spoken about at the end of the meeting. And I just want to reiterate, chief and assistant chief, that how utterly impressed I was with you both and you in particular, chief. You get a lot of ribbing around here, but I was very impressed with you and the amount of effort that you put out, working shoulder to shoulder with everybody over there. And your crews just working hour upon hour upon hour without complaint, energetic, helpful as much as they could, even had to tell them to stop to eat. So you didn't hear that last time, you got a lot of kudos, I wanted to make sure that you heard that. So thank you so much, it's nice to be impressed by people and I appreciate that. And then just really quickly to you, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for all the work you put in going to Austin and not lobbying, what do we call it? Advocating on behalf of the city and the county. The amount of hours you were logging, if we were paying you, we'd be broke. So thank you so much for doing that, much appreciated.
Maybe we can get that amended in the next charter. Bev, do you have anything?
We cannot revise the charter for five years, Mayor. And yes, yes, I have several announcements. In the consent agenda tonight, you guys approved a surplus sale because you are enjoying these nice lovely cushy new chairs. We have a few extras back here for sale for anybody that would like one. So enjoy your new ones. Thank you to council for approving my contract extension, I'll try not to let you down. The budget workshop, I remind you, is going to be Monday, August 4th at 5:00 p.m., we will provide dinner. Thank you Councilman Towery for setting up a meeting with a contractor for Thursday of this week for our next steps on Safe Haven Baby Box. And we are also meeting with that same contractor on these 548 station upgrade. Last but not least, I already made my chief announcements, I won't cry again for that one. The city manager search is down to two final candidates, you have a packet at your place with their resumes. We will conduct in-person interviews next Tuesday, the 29th, at 6:30 in executive session. Please come with one or two questions you would like to ask, time may only allow for one, but we will try to get everything in. At the end of the executive sessions, I will be instructed on to begin contract negotiations if you choose one of the candidates. Questions? You know your assignment? Okay, that's all I have.
Bev, did you say that was Wednesday or Thursday that we were meeting?
Thursday.
Okay.
Did I say Wednesday?
You said Tuesday.
I did not say Tuesday, today's Tuesday, it's Thursday.
I think you said Thursday.
It is Thursday.
I was just talking about the contractor, not the executives, not the meeting. The meeting with the contractor is Thursday.
So was it Saturday?
Do not confuse him anymore.
Well, we'll probably never get this deputy back, but first of all, Jeff, thank you also for taking some time on the Amazon Prime days to find these chairs so that we could have an upgrade. So appreciate you doing that and I like that they all match. We're being professional around here.
And we actually have all matching ones in the conference room also, and enough for everybody where we don't have to go steal out of offices.
Yep, and Chief Stout got a different chair at his office. I want to also thank obviously the fire chiefs for their leadership, y'all were not here. But I appreciate everything that y'all did, the time that y'all put in and your troops over there, it meant a lot to me. It's funny that the city attorney kept saying that the knives tonight to stab in the back. I actually gave chief one of my knives that I collect as a personal gift to him.
You'll see it again.
I attended the roads meeting and I can tell you right now, folks, the roads, we hear the people, we definitely are taking our roads serious in the city of McLean and Chisholm now, I think the people are seeing that. Myself and Bev spoke out on probably about four or five different roads and we followed it up with an email with Judge New, letting them know, you know, what our direction is and what we're trying to accomplish with, whether it be with the city doing it or the county doing it or a combination of both. But we are, we are staying on top of that. See what else I have? I think that might be it. So with that, it is 8:02 and we are adjourned.